Okay, welcome. I would like to call to order the Town of Haymarket Planning Commission meeting for this evening, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Roll call, please.
Baker?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Present.
Chris?
Present.
Yama.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this now brings us to citizens' time. Are there any citizens wishing to address the Planning Commission this evening? Seeing none, are there any emails we've received? Okay. The next on the agenda, we will turn to the minute approval. Are there any edits to the minutes as presented?
No.
Having none. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes for the meeting on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five?
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting from August twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay.
Look at that.
Perfect. It's very nice.
There we go.
And there we go. And the next item on the agenda, the first of the agenda items, is a land use presentation from our town manager, Emily. Welcome back.
Thank you. So if you want to go ahead and put that in presentation mode from current slide. Okay, so, Commission, it's good to be here. It's been a while, so nice to reconnect. Since we haven't had a meeting in the last couple of months, I wanted to take this opportunity to come in, give everybody an update on all of the open land use applications and the status of all the projects that we have going on. This is going to be kind of a working session, so please feel free to stop me at any point and ask questions. I'm happy to address anything as we go through. So, give me just a second. Okay, so, things that we currently have in feasibility or a pre-submission phase, some of these have changed just a little bit, and we're in a preliminary review phase, but the town has recently received the rezoning. Can you advance it one slide, please? Yeah. The town has received the rezoning application for the QBE property, one four six hundred Washington Street. This was submitted in October. The town engineer and I are working through the initial review of this, preparing it and getting it ready for putting it up for public notice and having it referred to the Planning Commission. So, I am projecting that at the December first meeting, we'll be working with the town council to refer the application down to the Planning Commission, at which point, at our next Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission will discuss when they want to hold the first public hearing on it, so that'll be slated most likely for the January meeting. So, this application specifically is for rezoning of roughly seven point four five acres on the property. It carves out the existing commercial brick old school building and leaves a portion of it intact. Some of the old brick school building will be removed and the commercial area will be altered to a smaller footprint. Right now, they're proposing fifty-eight townhomes to be added to this property, with the existing entry point being modified into an entry-exit point and an additional entry-exit point off of Blight Drive. So, that is this rezoning in a nutshell. They're going from B one Town Center and downzoning it to R two. So again, I'll bring more information. We'll bring the complete package to the Planning Commission in coming weeks, but this is what, this is one of our larger projects that we're currently working on. Our next project, the town has received a site plan for the self-storage lots. So if you're familiar with the area behind Sheets, it's industrial, and back there we tab two self-storage lots. They are surface parking lots that are currently being utilized by the storage company. They house anything from campers to tractor trailers to other vehicles that need to be stored. So, they have submitted for the official site plan. They had previously applied for site plans and never got the final approval of that. We are trying to work towards finalizing this, getting an approval, and having this area developed with the paved parking, the appropriate curb and gutter, lighting, et cetera. We are being a little bit cautious as it does meet up right there with North Fork Creek, as you can see in the map. So, we are being sure to check the riparian buffers and the areas right around the creek that are more sensitive to this kind of development. Yes.
Will anything be done for the railroad crossing or any kind of suggestions?
To be determined. So there is that railroad crossing right there. It is a private crossing, and so with it being a private crossing, it is up to the property owner to modify and to address that. So, it is not, it is not a public crossing. You don't have a public through point back there, so the only activity you have back there would be users of the storage lot or the business behind it to the south of North Fork. There's one, there's one business back there. So, that entire grade crossing is considered private. And when you have a private crossing, you are not, I don't know all of the details of it, but you are not required to have the same warning system and signage, crossing bars, et cetera. So, to my knowledge, the private crossing is owned by whoever holds that easement along that Cap Valley Way road, but I could look into who, who the parties are that are ownership of it. Landscape landscaping companies back there.
Yes, that'd been my question too, related to the easement, so.
Yeah. Okay, Kim. Down at the south of Fayette Street, so in this map picture, you'll see three called-out parcels that are highlighted in blue. So the two that are to the west, so the middle one and the leftmost one, those two, we have received a site plan for. We have turned around the initial comments on that site plan. It's for two single-family homes, one on each lot. We are working with the developer as well to address the sidewalk connection point along that area of the road. So, this is a pretty standard, single-family site plan. This one's a little bit more complex. Do you have that pointer by chance? I'm trying to see if I have a pointer. Okay. Yeah, it's okay. So, you see the blue area that's highlighted. That is right behind CVS, sits behind the bank, it sits to the left of Kitty Academy as you look at it, and it's right in the property of the exit ramp getting onto sixty-six. So, right off of fifteen and kind of Heathcote. So, we've just received a preliminary site plan. We had already received a preliminary site plan. We had already worked on the approval of a preliminary site plan. However, it does look like they've made some modifications. They've resubmitted a preliminary site plan again. So we'll be working on that. And so again, that hotel is going to go in that location right there. And then because of a twenty nineteen, I'm sorry, that says twenty fifteen, that should say twenty nineteen special use permit approval, they are able to go up to six stories in height. So that is something that was done back in twenty nineteen. There is no sunset clause on that. There's no expiration of that. And so that is something we do have to honor as they've come in for it. While I'm on this slide, what I also want to point out is, so Kitty Academy is in this parcel right here. They are built pretty much finished. There's another parcel that sits to the front of that, in front of Kitty Academy and to the east of the hotel site, and that's right here. And they've also, the same owner, has submitted for a retail preliminary site plan there. So, there's going to be an additional commercial building back there in that area. We're working through those. Right now, we're not seeing anything major in the plans, pretty standard for what our zoning ordinance allows in that area. Any questions on that one?
And that retail is with the underlying zoning, not related to the special use permit, correct?
Correct. That's correct. And all of that will be accessed off of Crossroads Village Boulevard, which you can kind of see in that map image there. That spine road goes all the way back to that property. It will also further be developed. It's not fully developed today, but it will be further developed to carry all the way into the hotel site. That I have in here. It's my last slide. Yeah. Yep, I'll get to that one. Okay, Kim? So these upcoming projects, we've either have them in plan review, they have been approved, or they're in the construction phase. So, Town Center Site Plan, I think most of you should be pretty familiar with this one, and Jeff, you heard a lot about it at the strategic plan. So, that's for this property right here. So, all of the blue parcels that you see up on the screen, those are all owned by the Town of Haymarket. They're all right here on this complex, and we house several different buildings here. And so what we have is we have an approved site plan that I signed in August of twenty twenty-three for all of the exterior site work, curb and gutter, sidewalks, stormwater management systems, pavement, a redesign of the parking lot, redesign of the green space up front, and also the addition of a right-hand turn-only lane off of Jefferson Street onto Washington Street. So, great plan. It would really help to start addressing some of the concerns we have at the intersection. It would put in additional through points for traffic coming through. It finishes up our sidewalk on the, the center of town, really, at the intersection, but also it connects our shared use path right into our sidewalk network with an official sidewalk, not just walking in the parking lot. So, we are taking this right now to the town council level. Staff is asking and proposing different funding options for council to consider, and we're pretty hopeful that council will be able to make a decision and vote on a possible funding scenario in the coming months. Chick-fil-A, so there's two that are actually, multiple sites here are highlighted, but Chick-fil-A sits in the bigger portion there that's highlighted over here on the right-hand side. You'll kind of recognize it with its drive-through there. So, back over about a year ago, they started applying for a second drive-through lane. They did receive the expansion approval in the spring of this current year. So we are now working on the site plan phase of it. So it's a, a site plan revision because they are expanding the drive-through lane. They are having to do infrastructure modifications. So, we're currently working on that. I would think that they could probably, we're finalizing some second round comments. It's pretty cleaned up, so this could be a December meeting item, but it'll most likely be January. The Planning Commission will receive it. Carter School, so down by Haymarket Baptist Church and then VCA Healthy Paws, where Robinson Village Townhomes are there in the back. There's two vacant lots that sit up on Washington Street. The larger of the two is going to house the Carter School. It's a Montessori based school that'll go there. It'll go on the east side and back of the lot primarily with their parking and their building. And then along the front of Washington Street, they're going to put in a retail space so that onsite they have kind of a multi-use. What they're trying to aim for is keeping some of those quick trips that families make before, after daycare on the same site. So they are trying to attract businesses that could also benefit the families that go there. In the smaller lot, they'll also be putting a small retail structure in there and the appropriate parking. So we are currently still working on that site plan. That will also be coming to Planning Commission very soon. So you guys are about to get very busy very soon. Magnolia Crossing, this is something that Planning Commission has actually already looked at. So, approval's been given. Eleven townhouses, we'll go back there where those three parcels are highlighted. The three existing houses will come down. The demolition for that, though, expires in December. We have notified the applicant of the expiration. At this time, it sounds like they'll be coming back in to reapply for that demolition. They're not ready to move on the permit, so we'll address that as that comes. But otherwise, the eleven townhouses do have an approved site plan, and we are waiting for the appropriate bonds to be submitted for that. This is an older plan that's kind of hung out, if you will. So, the Masonic Lodge also owns the Tobaccoology House property. They made some significant improvements there before Tobaccoology went into that property. They did some parking improvements, lighting improvements, et cetera. And so the Masonic Lodge is also looking to determine if they're going to do further improvements on their property. This is a site plan they had previously approved. Based on the time it was approved, though, they will now need to do a resubmission. It's been five years, and they'll need to ensure that it meets the current state codes for stormwater. Tobaccoology, I believe everything's been completed back there the way it needed to be done, so it should just be the Masonic Lodge. Lidl. So, Lidl, we don't have a definite answer if they're coming or not. They had some overgrowth of weeds and other things that needed to be addressed on the property. We have reached out to them shortly after they remedied the issues onsite. We also noticed that they put a sign up that it is for sale or for lease. So, if you asked me today, it seems like they're looking to possibly get rid of the land and move on outside of the town. So, that's where Lidl stands. There is a signed site plan for Lidl, but it's never been bonded. Okay, currently.
Any expiration on that site plan initially?
It'll fall under that five-year mark.
Five-year, okay. Five-year. Thank you.
Currently under construction, we have Kitty Academy and the Haymarket Iceplex. So, Kitty Academy, as you guys are all probably aware and have passed it, it is being developed back there in the Crossroads Village Center development. They're pretty close to finishing up all of construction and should be working on their final as-built survey to be submitting it soon. So we're just, at this point, awaiting that. We finally got some kinks in the deed worked out. That's been recorded appropriately. And then once they start the as-built submission process, we'll also be working on bond release process. Haymarket Iceplex, they had a previously approved site plan. They phased this project. They did a initial phase of it where they built out a majority of the parking lot and the stormwater infrastructure. And so now they're working on a Phase Two. They're working on enclosing a concrete space to add more seating and office space. Again, this is something that was previously approved and part of the initial site plan. They are not changing any of the footprint. They are not modifying anything on the exterior when it comes to parking, stormwater infrastructure, or anything that would impact the stormwater infrastructure. So, we allowed them to continue with their second phase, and they are currently under construction and working on that. Projects that we are working on, the as-built phase or the bond release phase, so these are ones that we're trying to wrap up. One that's not actually on this list and is a very unique scenario is Chick-fil-A. So when Chick-fil-A was originally built in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen timeframe, they never submitted the as-bills and received final approval of those as-bills and bond release. And so we're working on that process now to get them off the original bonds and approve the original as-bill. But at the exact same time, we're also working on this new site plan for the new construction phase. So again, they're a bit of a unique scenario. Crossroads Village Center, they have just submitted their as-bills for our review, so we're currently in review of those. That's for the commercial sites up front and the multi-tenant structures, as well as the townhouse structures in the back. Taco Bell is a standalone. Taco Bell built out on their own site plan, so they're on separate bonds. Town Park Sidewalk, we just met this week, actually, on our final punch list items. So, took a little bit longer than we fully expected, but we are trying to work through the punch list and hopefully finish and wrap that up very shortly. Again, Taco Bell, separate bonding process. We are working on the landscape bond release as well as the as-built reveal. Smiles Lifetime Dentistry, they have yet to submit as-bills and work on bond release, and so this is one that we need to continue to follow up on. Robinson's Paradise, so they're located, if you went down Jefferson Street, Old Carolina, over sixty-six, like you're headed towards Heathcote. Off to the left, you have Robinson's Paradise. They recently built out and finished up construction last year. We've had, unfortunately, some significant flooding with some pre-existing houses that were on site, as well as one or two of the new homes. So, myself and the engineer are actively working on that. We're trying to address the issues at hand. We will be scheduling a meeting with the developer. We've done some additional research on our end, and we're ready to meet with them and suggest some modifications, so that'll be coming up soon. Otherwise, we are working on reviewing the as-bills. We have requested some stormwater agreements to be updated, so still in the review phase for bond release. Jefferson Fayette Street Lots, so two lots down at the corner of Jefferson and Fayette. Again, we are working on the bond release phase. They have not yet submitted as-bills. I will be meeting with the developer representative tomorrow, actually, and going through the next steps for them to seek full bond release. And Robinson Village Van Meter, we are holding the landscape bond in escrow, so everything was built out in twenty twenty-three, and then we go through the process of bond release. Once we get full bond release, we do hold landscape, ten percent of the landscape bond in escrow. In the occurrence that something dies and needs to be replaced, they are able to do so. And so we're in that final phase right now with Van Meter. This is kind of more of an awareness for everybody. So, the town received with the help of Prince William County grant funding for looking into our stormwater system and some of the issues that we have. So, historically speaking, the Town of Haymarket has a variety of stormwater systems. We don't know the status of all of them or how they are currently functioning. And so we do have three areas in the town that we have had stormwater issues at, and so this grant team is coming in, excuse me, this grant team is coming in and helping us to assess these systems, assess these areas most specifically, and look at what can be done to the infrastructure to mitigate the impacts that we're seeing. So again, that's currently happening. We should be wrapping that up by the end of the summer next year, but it is an active project we have going on. And then last but not least, so the Town of Haymarket participates in courtesy one-mile review cases, and this is one that is a bit more significant and out there. So, if you see, I know it's a little dark, but you'll see that a Virgin Diamond is there in the bottom-left corner of this image, and then you'll see above it the two white parcels, and you'll see a call-out. So, on the bottom-most white image there, what you see is the overlay of the site plan of what it's going to look like. So in that area, we're going to be seeing a Sprouts, a Wawa, and then a multi-tenant building. In the multi-tenant building, this is that call-out on the bottom-right screen, and I'm going to go from the bottom business up towards the top. So the bottom one is a drive-through Panera. At this time, the next one is vacant. It's orange. The next one after that is a nail salon. Above that is my eye doctor, and then above that is Chipotle. So that's the multi-tenant building on site. On the other side of Heathcote, on the north side, you have three structures. So the leftmost structure closest to Route fifteen is going to be a Chase Bank. The one in the middle is going to be a Virginia Tire and Auto, and then the one on the right is going to be a Tommy's Express Car Wash, I think is what they call it. And then you'll see that two portions of this site plan image are shown as pink. Those are actually proposed. I need, I need to follow up on what the final status of this is, but at the time we recently looked at it, it is still under review, but it's proposed townhouses, and combined the two of them would be two hundred and thirty-two additional townhouses in that area. So, a friendly reminder, good educational moment for everybody, is so we receive one-mile review applications for projects that are rezonings or special use permits that happen in Prince William County, and they're within one mile of the town boundary. And so, of course, this one is very close to our border, and we have been working on reviewing this for quite some time. We provide comments as we can, and when we can, we do as thoroughly as we can. So, one of the things you'll see, and I don't know that it actually just came in yesterday, so it did not make it on your agenda, but I'm going to tell you about it tonight. I have received another one-mile review application. I sent that out to, I believe all of you should have received it yesterday in your email. Take a look at it. Our comments are not due till the end of December, but we will be putting that on the next December Planning Commission agenda. I'll pull it up on the screen. We will talk about it. We'll gather comments. I'll be gathering comments also from the town council so that we can put together a full package and submit that down to the county. So, in that case, it is additional residential units. So, think about, you can read through the whole package, but think about traffic impacts to the Town of Haymarket. Think about service impacts that we might see in this area. Think about the infrastructure connectivity, things of that nature is what we would be commenting on. Any questions? I know there was a lot packed into twenty-five minutes, but this is y'all's time. Ask questions if you want to.
I'm kind of new here, so I just want to ask, with the one-mile review, how much influence do we have if we're for or against something?
So, that's a hard question. No, no. It's a good question. So, we do our best to put together our comments, and we, there's times we meet with the supervisors and we do share that, you know, these are some of our major concerns from the Town of Haymarket, from our residents, from our Planning Commission, from our council. We send it all over, and then it's kind of up to the powers that be down there. It's up to their Planning Commission. It's up to their Board of Supervisors. They do take into consideration our comments as well as everyone else's comments that are posed. Oftentimes, the developers will reach out and they will try to speak with us, address our comments. That's certainly very appreciated because not everyone does that. But I have not seen where if we, as the Town of Haymarket say, you know, we're I have not seen where if we, as the town of Haymarket say, you know, we're strongly in support of a denial for this application. That they do exactly what we ask, right? So, yeah, so they take into consideration, but I've not seen it in practice. Where they always, you know, fall back on what we've recommended. Any other questions? I can go back to certain slides.
I do have a question about the QBE building.
Okay.
Did that? Developer come back with the, or share the traffic study that was done?
Yes, so that is part of the application. We do have the traffic impact analysis. So you guys will get a copy of all of that.
Perfect.
Anything else? And you can think on it. If you guys have questions come up, drop me an email. Happy to discuss further. So and since our meeting's a week later, I feel like we'll be meeting again in three weeks anyway. So we can go back over things again.
So I guess I have one more question.
Yeah, please.
Do we feel a second drive-through lane for Chick-fil-A is going to help the traffic, or do you think it's going to make it worse? Just curious.
I will stand by. What I said during the application phase. I did not find that it was warranted and needed. And so that was from a staff point of view. That was my recommendation was that the SUP be denied. And council ultimately voted that it be approved. And so that is what we are working on.
It is, it is.
With conditions.
It is a dicey area to drive through.
It is. It is. I'm very interested to see how the design of it is more functional for them. I hope that it is more functional for them. Certainly, we'll address the appropriate conditions. And the, the reality of it when it does come. We are working on the approval process of it. Making sure it meets all of our ordinance requirements, so.
Would there be a way to leverage that back road towards the townhouses for an exit?
You must have listened to previous meetings.
No, my dentist is lifetime smiles, so I sneak through there often to dodge all of that.
These were all questions and thoughts that we thought of. I'm trying to remember, they wanted to close it. They wanted to close, it's been a bit. We've had a lot of projects. They wanted to close the back entrance exit. So that it was, I believe, entrance onto the site only. We've asked them to keep it open as an exit. I know personally I use that because if you go out that way into the light, you pretty quickly get the left-hand turn all the time. I think as people start to learn that and be more accustomed to it, it'll help. I think as soon as that gravel area behind CVS and the dentist gets fully paved. I think people will start taking that back route all the way around more often. It's just that learning curve, learning what is the path of least resistance, and that's usually the one people take.
I also don't know how many people realize that that back entrance way goes from Chick-fil-A, like all the way down to the barber shop.
Right.
Which is awesome.
Yeah, exactly.
It's almost awesome that not many people know about it. Cause like, it's, it's very easy to use.
And again, I think part of that's going to be, once it gets fully developed, there's another retail spot back there in the hotel. I think people are going to start realizing that it's that spine road and there's interconnected parcels. I do think that will help over time.
Awesome.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, easy enough. Kim, do you want to go through the?
Again, thank you Emily for the comprehensive explanation where all these different projects and plans set, stand currently. So thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, our next gen item is the twenty-twenty-six meeting schedule, which I believe, Kim, you will walk us through.
Yes, sir. I'm going to refer to packet page number five. This is, I've kept all the meetings on the second Tuesday as our bylaw date. The only conflict I have is the Tuesday, September eighth, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day. And town council policy and procedures state that. If a meeting, their first meeting of the month of, is a Monday, first Monday of the month is their regular meeting. If that falls on a holiday, it automatically goes to the second, to the next day, which is your planning commission meeting. So they take priority over planning commission. So you have to reschedule your planning commission to either the third Tuesday of the month. Or go to the next day, which would be the second Wednesday. So I just need, we're looking at either December, or excuse me, September ninth, which would be a Wednesday. Or Tuesday, September fifteenth. Staff recommends keeping it on a Tuesday, even though. Only Mr. Young has. Commitments as a teacher on Mondays and Wednesday nights, so. I would recommend keeping it like Tuesday, September fifteenth.
Works for me.
It does work.
Okay.
While we're talking schedules real quick, I just want to give you guys kind of a heads up as we come into the inclement weather months. As necessary, we will be coordinating with you kind of real time. If there's bad weather on the day of one of our meetings, please be available to kind of help us pivot. And on short notice, because there will be some applications and some hearings that we do need to hold. So hopefully we don't have bad weather that messes up with our January and February meetings. But please just kind of keep an eye out for Kim's correspondence. If there's a best way to reach you on sudden notice, please, you know, coordinate that with Kim. So we can do so.
Yeah, does it require any?
No, no, no required vote.
Very good.
An agreement and a directive to proceed. That's it.
Excellent. And again, thank you for that update, Kim. And now I believe we'll turn to our next item on the agenda. The related to the resignation of the Planning Commissioner Dave Capicello. He did resign as he was appointed to the town council last week. And therefore we would need to appoint someone to serve as the Planning Commission liaison to the Architectural Review Board. On that note, it's been brought to my attention that Commissioner Kress would like to be considered to be the liaison. So therefore I would ask, is there a nomination to appoint Mr. Jeff Kress as the liaison to the ARB?
I nominate Jeff Kress for, sorry. Liaison to the ARB.
Are there any other nominations?
Hearing none. Do I have a motion to appoint Jeff Kress as the Planning Commission liaison to the Architectural Review Board?
Yes, I make a motion to. Appoint Jeff Kress to the, to be the ARB liaison.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second that motion. And Kim, would you go ahead and please open up the voting to record votes?
You're going to refresh. On the left-hand side. And vote.
I don't know.
I don't either. Mine's not working.
You can, you can vote for yourself.
I did.
You just contributed, click submit.
And then go to vote.
There we are. Okay. Easy enough.
Okay, thank you. And of course, that was the last item on the agenda piece. Next, we return to the old business. So Emily, do you have any old business updates?
I don't have any additional updates since we kind of went through all of that land use development presentation. I pretty much covered all of the old and new business.
Agreed. So hearing none of the old business, same thing as you said for new business, there's no additional new business. So we'll continue on to, I believe you have the ARB updates as well, Emily, for this meeting.
We have not had anything on the agenda for ARB meeting for the last two months, so we have canceled. We are expecting to have a meeting next month, though.
Excellent. Thank you. And that will now bring us to the town council updates. So Councilmember Baker, please.
Yes. So. Just want to thank everybody. We had a successful Haymarket Day and a successful farmer's market. Thanks to Julia and Emily and staff for, for doing that. We've also held a strategic planning meeting on November first to discuss items we have accomplished this past year. And re-categorize our priorities going forward. We have determined that the town council site plan is priority, followed by the town park pavilion. The town manager has sent out the RFP for the park. Thank you, Emily. Also want to, on November third, town council, at our town council meeting, Chief Subert recognized Lonnie Milstead. Officer Bragoon and Galbert for going above and beyond in the line of duty. We also awarded our compensation study RFP at our November meeting. There will be more to come from that. We discussed our town hall hours for the holidays. The office will be closed at noon on Wednesday. November twenty-sixth and remain closed until Monday, December first for Thanksgiving. Town hall will be closed at noon on December twenty-second and remain closed to the public. Until Monday, January fifth for the Christmas holidays. Staff will be posting emails and the town manager's phone number in case of someone needs service. I think this is a huge morale booster. Speaking of the holidays, the town's holiday event will be on Saturday, December thirteenth from two to six P.M. Come out and support the local vendors, enjoy some local entertainment from our schools and visit with Santa. I think Matt's dressed, dressing up as Santa? No? We have Santa. Yeah. Yeah, okay. And last but not least, want to congratulate Dave Capicello. To being one of our new town council members for the town of Haymarket. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Baker, and is there any other business to discuss? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second, Ed.
All right. Hold on a favor, we'll go ahead and say, voice vote. Say aye.
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 Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.